Call what you need to order. We'll also note that this meeting is being recorded by SCTV and replays will be available on www.sinsburytv.org. And Rob should say that. They have asked us to say that.
Okay.
All right. First, business after the pledge of leisuries, which we did before they called to order, very odd words. Is the approval of minutes from August 21st, 2018.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We will begin today. We actually have a, we do have a substantive agenda of things to review and discuss, so why don't we begin with finance here.
Okay. So as you can tell from here, we have a lot going on in finance. We've had an update on the retirement plan subcommittee. We have our purchasing policy ordinance update. Our Q went out and we actually did interview two accounting firms today. And then we have several finance department initiatives that are going on, including implementation of P-hards, the purchase order system, new policies, some things of that effect. So if you had a chance to read through, if anybody has any comments or questions?
Why don't we go one by one?
Yeah.
All right. So do we want to start with the retirement plan subcommittee meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, let's do that.
I have a question.
Sure.
I mentioned this to Amy and I mentioned it to you, Rob. In the past, the subcommittee did an experience study and the last one was done in 2012 and get a more accurate assessment of what's coming due and over time. And I think we're due according to Millman when they presented in 2012, they said to do it every five years. So we are within the time to do it, so I'd ask the subcommittee.
So what's involved in that report, Lisa?
So it looks at, it's kind of a morbid report. It looks at health and when people die. So because you need to know how much you need to fund and people are living 10 years longer than five. So they're living less than you need, less healthy.
So is this based on our actual population rather than just actuarial?
Precisely. It's about, it's about our experience in relation.
Relative, relative to the.
And Millman says we can wait 10 years. I'm okay with that, but they had said when they presented in 2012, every five years.
So Derek has barely sat down, but since you represented us on the subcommittee, maybe you could give us sort of your overview of things that are coming up from that subcommittee, including what Lisa talked about, which is the, how did you describe it?
Experience study that we had last done in 2012. That was before we reserved.
I'll try to get my head on the prior one. Provide some insight at the next meeting. I'm not sure when our next retirement plan subcommittee is. I know we were trying to potentially book another one before the tri board meeting, but I don't know if that's. Are you looking for an opening?
I don't know if this is the right place where we can talk about the rate, the rate assumption, which I think is a big, that's a big topic, so we might as well go ahead and throw that out.
Yeah, I would, I would say that, you know, kind of given where we are in the economic cycle, things are very, things are, unemployment's at its lowest it's been in a long time. At the end of the day though, Millman's recommendation, or not their recommendation, but the statement was simply inverted. Correct me or add to it that it was a matter of where, you know, where our discount rate is now, it was really a matter of paying now or paying later. And, you know, I just kind of threw out there that given, you know, where we are economically right now, it might make sense to just not go for a full, I think it was 50 basis points originally that they had talked about.
You talked about lowering the rate of return.
The rate of return, which.
On the front contribution. And we did it a few years ago.
We did.
So where are we now and what's the recommendation?
I believe we're at seven or seven and a quarter.
Seven.
We're at seven. And so the thought process was maybe take that down to six, to six and a half. We had talked about doing, you know, 12 and a half basis points kind of going forward and, but, you know, kind of, the thought process was that if we're going to do it incrementally, that we probably do it in quarter point increments to get it, try and get it down to six and a half. You know, kind of speaking out of both sides of my mouth, I also know where treasury rates are going to, you know, rates tend to be going up. So it's interesting that we're having this conversation, but, you know, certainly the long yields are definitely, they're not as quite as volatile as the five to 10 year yields. So it's definitely out there and from Millman was, you know, we're kind of taking the approach we're looking at it is, you know, you're either going to have to do it now or do it later.
So what's the process for the pension subcommittee? Do they make a recommendation to the town of what that should be?
To us.
And then we accept it as a board of finance?
Yeah, and that was kind of the thought process around having another meeting before the tri board to be able to make that recommendation or not.
This would be effective for the 2019, 2020 budget that we go, the budget season that we're going to be going to right after.
Starting now, basically.
Derek, that's about $170,000, $180,000 kind of fifty, the 6-5.
I forgot whether it was a quarter that they did or the full half. They did do some sensitivity and I know it was different for the town side than the board of ed would definitely feel more of the pain. They would feel actually all the pain because they actually, I think, well, before I got in. So a lot of questions come, come to mind that we have to work out with that sort of next policy update because we approved that in that third question on the ballot. It's that miscellaneous, you know, with debt, retirement and the special revenue funds. One of the practical ways that we use it is that, you know, it's not a singular operating appropriation. It is a two-year life span which goes back to that policy. So we get to be planning a little bit like we do the IDEA grants. We're kind of planning a couple of years. We're not just one year at a time. Sometimes we purchase a large number of buses, for example, but we try to keep it consistent two or three per year. So we just have to understand how, how that might change if you, if you make some of these other changes and how, you know, I would advocate that it should not be a one year and then it just basically operating, that it's still kind of got a separate, a separate fund status and.
I think that's a good point that you made, that it actually helps. It almost forces you to buy things and not cut things because you're only getting one fifth of the reduction, right?
But he's, he's also making the point about the impact on your choices in your operating budget, that if you think, well, I'll cut maintenance, which is an operating expense.
Right.
Then, but it's going to not save you that much. Say that again, because you said it better than I did.
That was a little light one off when you said that. It's just that, it's just that because our, our categories are both buying infrastructure equipment, but also repairs to, you know, it's like replacing the flooring or the ceiling project. It's that basic maintenance that isn't just sitting in our operating budget that we're able to plan for. And so by intended to cut that, you remove some of that temptation in trying to hit your operating target because you're really just sort of putting it off to the side and you're borrowing from yourself is the way it was always explained.
But in what Rob's saying, what you're saying is that instead of borrowing sort of prospectively, you would just be paying for it out of this reserve fund. So it still wouldn't hit you negatively? I mean, I would think you take out those truly recurring things, you know, cop card that gets bought every single year, but the things like that you're saying, maybe if it doesn't have to hit your operating expenses and isn't charged back to you in some way, but it comes out of the CNR fund that's pre-funded instead of post-funded?
Because I just don't think we're going to have the stability in this hypothetical fund. I mean, it exists, but I mean, the way we're talking about changing.
What do you? What he's trying to say is that, I mean, if we come and we say you have to cut and if there's a project, they're more likely to cut with the new proposal versus what they currently have. If we say come and cut, they try to cut, they're only going to get one fifth of the savings now. So it actually prevents them from doing.
Right. Stability, just like stability and how much we were spending that, you know, prior boards of finance said, let's kind of keep it level. There's some benefits to that consistency, that that's what we spend to maintain our plates and our infrastructure. How we do it and how we fund it is a sort of a separate conversation, but there are some important aspects there that I don't think we want to look at.
That's what I'm trying to get at, is there a way to keep that incentive, but instead of funding it prospectively, you are funding it with annual expenses really?
Well, you can, so you wipe the slate clean, which is what Jamie's proposed. And then we could.
Put enough in that.
Put $500,000 into the fund every year. And you have to come get those things approved, same approval process you have. So the question is how does that, those expenditures hit the expense budget? That really is the issue.
That's part of it, but we have, we have a different approval process for that than the town in terms of, you know, we show what our categories are and it's part of the public hearing notice, which we've all seen of the CNR spending. We're not coming, we're not coming and asking, you know, for a transfer. We're able to plan and say, we have this amount of money in interior improvement, exterior improvement. Those are the types of categories outside of vehicle stuff that we have a source of funds and we're able to figure out where we're going to, where we're going to repair X, Y, Z.
And is there a standard? Is there a standard?
Not that I'm aware of. Everybody does it differently. Everybody funds it differently. Everybody, you know, some people use, you know, a contribution to their capital reserve only based on, you know, the general fund coming into positive. Some people fund it every year. Some people fund it as necessary. So as a practice, I can definitely research, but I know it's not done one standard way every single place. And that's kind of the beauty of it honestly, because we can match our needs to what we want, whatever we want it to be.
You know, if we wipe the slate clean, then we could buy a couple of extra million dollars worth of stuff this year.
Don't think that's a point.
So one of the things that Linda you raised and Kevin you raised as well, and what we did in the last budget cycle, we had the plow truck, remember, as part of CNR. And I think the recommendation was to put it in capital. We didn't want to do that. Instead, we moved it back into operating because you do it every certain number of years, just like the police cars. So the reason we didn't move the police cars and the plow truck into operating is because we had a limit on how much we were going to let the boards raise their operating budgets. But if they want to make that accounting transfer and do that sort of like we do with the pension, if we can get the accounting right, a lot of the, to Laura's point, a lot of the reason why stuff ended up in CNR was because of 2008 and they were trying to get everything out of the operating budget. So you ended up with the police cars that only have a three-year life in CNR or in other funds as opposed to, they used to be in the operating budget as did the plow truck, but those got moved out to try and deal with the financial crisis that occurred. So to the, but once you do that, it's very hard to come back in. But in terms of things that we might consider for the boards is if there are accounting things like that, that we now feel we're in a position to correct, to not count those against their budget increase and just fix it. We may already a position where maybe we have an opportunity to fix some of the past practices.
The town side of the budget was actually okay and pleased that. That's on, that's on the OPEB, I think. Really have the similar issues for the tri board meeting, I think, to your point, both, both pension as well as OPEB, similar, similar, you know, what is the budget impact of making those changes? Just to have all that data was our principle for the.
So in terms of history, when we last reduced, I think we were at, were we at eight or seven?
Something like that.
But when we got it down to seven, the board of finance at that point sort of didn't hold that against either the town or the board in terms of their budget increase. That was a side thing because you do it once and it got us from a strong foot. So if we do that, and I hope that we do, we're inclined to go 6.5 even though treasuries are at.
Say that's a 6.67.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then the following year get it to, it would be like a two-year max kind of process to get it down to that.
I would, you know, I'm inclined to go the full 6.5 right away, just do it once. But I, you know, I'll defer. Can you believe this, Rob, coming from me?
You're sitting on the other side of the desk.
That's right.
So how was it handled last time?
So what, because I think at the time, there was about a $200,000 give or take impact on the two boards and we just didn't count that in terms of their budget increase because their budgets increased.
So how did you get a, a reserve?
Yes.
It was closer to three of thought, but.
You may be right.
It took. It took. It took. You could delay a year by taking it out of the general fund, but at some point it was in the budget.
Right. Right. But you could do it like reserve.
Just smooth out.
The way it was done at the, at the, sort of the end of the process was the board of finance essentially stated this, this was this impact that they were recommending and it was not part of the board's request increase from.
Relative to the.
That was, it was how it was presented. Obviously it goes into our budgets for the subsequent years, which is just trying to.
And then it was part of the mill rate. We did include that, but it was a board of finance increase as opposed to a board of select or a board of education.
All right.
Just one quick question. Amy, so you wrote this up, maybe it's a question for Derek, but you're saying that if we don't do any, make any change, that actually we would owe nothing to the OPEB board? The town would owe nothing for this coming year? That you'd actually take money out?
Well, we wouldn't take money out. So now 37,000 that's in the negative is because our employees contribute to the OPEB trust fund.
Well, it says town contribution will decrease.
Right.
To minus 13.
Right. So if you have the employee contributions and then you took out the 37,000, that's what our actual contribution into the fund should be, but we don't count the negative for the 37,000. So we're basically over, we're funding in excess of 100% using the employee contributions.
But you wouldn't take it out.
Right. Now we wouldn't take it out.
And the two conversations, one about pension and one about OPEB. So don't go to the assumption rate. Are you thinking, what is the OPEB assumption rate right now?
Same. I believe it's the same.
So would we bring the OPEB down complementing with the pension?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that. We should probably keep them the same.
Right. And Millman's preparing scenarios for each to be discussed during budgets.
All right. So we're not deciding anything tonight, but we're saying this is definitely a topic for the budget year and that we will deal with it. We'll look for guidance from Millman and the committee. I had anecdote later on the radio this weekend, that Ohio employees $100 billion fund is going to their target from seven and a half to 7.2. So it's, it's not unusual to do that. I'm not saying that 7.2 is a better number than 6.5. They have much more people to answer that. Anyway, we will, we want to be in F? No. Does that, I say it's 12 million people.
Yeah.
All right. Was there any other thing in your, so that's that topic.
So if we want to move on to the purchasing ordinance?
Yeah.
All the questions.
Can you, I mean, it just just said they looked at our recommendations and they proposed an adoptive, but it doesn't tell us if they take any of our recommendations, which ones? Do we, we don't have another.
So I was going to include the final policy at the next meeting because this one is going, going to the board of select a meeting for November 14, I believe it is.
So by the time it comes back, by the time you come back to us, it'll be.
It'll be final. Right. But offhand, I can tell you that they did increase the thresholds to be consistent with the board of, the board of education policy to 25,000 to go out to bid. And it was, oh, and then.
Don't forget what our recommendations are.
So they did take that recommendation and then, there's one more, I just lost my train of thought. Oh, there was the discussion over the attorney opinion regarding it being about ordinance versus a policy. So I guess the attorney didn't catch this prior when they were updating the ordinance, but it's actually not an ordinance, it is a policy. And the work group decided to keep it as a policy and not turn it into an ordinance. So those were the two major things that came up on the meeting.
We just reported, as Amy did, that we did interview two accounting firms today. They're amazingly close in price and the experience now either is qualified. Make a decision today?
We have a tentative decision pending.
Pending reference, a couple of reference checks. Should we say on the record who is pending? Probably not. All right. That would be a no.
Did they give information on sort of a technical support they could give or systems that you would have access to?
Yes.
We had five respond detailed questionnaire. We reviewed all five of those. We picked three finals to be interviewed to.
And your question regarding technology was included as a specific question for their presentation.
So let me dovetail with our Google Doc updates that are coming.
Let's, so finance initiatives.
Yes. Does anybody have any comments, questions on those?
I just wanted to say, good job on doing some updates. And I didn't understand the gift card tracking, but I'm sure that's.
We had to do what I think appropriate and so because I'm, it was still happening at the time those decisions were made. And we have professional reaction.
Especially the legalization of.
Right. Yeah. That's very important. So what's the timeline in which we have to do this? Do we need to vote on this tonight or?
You do not. So if you don't vote on it tonight, everything goes into general fund, fund balance and then you can address it at budget time.
I, I'm, it's muddy enough for me that I think we should think about it. Maybe you and I can talk about it. Anybody's welcome to. But I don't have my head completely around all of the motivations that, your point was very interesting. I, we, the example was always given was that they would defer buying buses until we needed so many buses and busted the, busted the budget. But the flip side's true too, which is that it's too easy to just cut a bus because that was $80,000 or whatever a bus cost. I have no idea what a bus cost.
Close. It's gone up a little bit, but yeah, they were about.
I think we have to have a better handle on what the unintended consequences could be.
Yes. Exactly. So it's not just an accounting question, it's a behavior, it's a management question. It's really a management question.
And, and can we put safeguards in place to manage?
We will work on that.
And do we want to move stuff back into operating?
What's that?
And then do we want to move stuff back into operating?
Well, the first comments I had with Amy today is I think we do need to, as part of this effort, concentrate on the things that Linda mentioned, which are capital non-recurring or capital and non-recurring or capital or non-recurring. Because I think the dollar impact of those things might be as important as this transfer because expenses are expected as expenses. Nothing to do with cash. It says to do it accounting expense rate. Right? All right.
Do we want to address the other things that are on your list?
Yes. Okay. So if you go to just the summary page with the dollar values, we found out since very general fund, general fund closed out here in February last after the agenda submission. So the first part is the total transfers to the general fund of the 31,769. This was already discussed as part of the capital projects. This was the debt interest offset for the capital projects that we were closing out and we were transferring the remaining funds into the general fund. So that under you taken care of. So if you go down to where it says transfers from general fund, we have the Sinsbury Farms operating losses of $230,000. And then below that, you have finance security upgrades capital fund. So back in 2018, there was $150,000 appropriated for finance security upgrades. And looking at the spending in that fund, the majority of those expenditures were not capital in nature. So they have like threat prevention subscriptions for $300, a filtering subscription for $300, wildlife subscription for $300. All of these, there are a couple of capital items, but the majority are the small, either one-time $40, $25, $115 subscriptions where we are authorized to bond under this fund in looking at the capital budget from fiscal year 18. So what I would like to do, since these expenditures are so small, I would like to pay for them via general fund money and then put the appropriation back to 150,000. And part of the reason for that is both the town and board of ed are all in agreement on going after a new financial software. So we would like to use these funds to propose a new financial software to do the progress assessment and the internal control audit. We need, according to the management comment from the audit last year, capital asset software, which would be so helpful. And we are also looking at some HR software that would integrate into our accounting software. So that's where that $80,000 is coming from. And then under CNR fiscal year 19, we have two color copiers right now that are getting service calls pretty regularly. In talking with our copier vendor, they're no longer making parts for those copiers. We purchased them back in 2008 and they typically only make parts for, I believe he said, eight to nine years. So those copiers are going to be in need of replacement. So the quotes that we received, we're actually able to replace these copiers with actually a savings to the town in the long run because the price per copy is decreased from five cents or .05 cents to, from a 10 cents a copy. In addition to that, we have a maintenance contract that they offered for 312,000 a year that takes care of all of the maintenance on the machine as well as the toner purchases. And the toner in and of itself is a large expense. The cartridges are.
I think you're good on this one.
Moving on.
Thanks, Lyda.
And the CNR for fiscal year 18, 17, 16, those are the ones that are being tabled to budget season. So those will now go into general fund, fund balance. And then the capital reserve fund, this was just the remaining net increase to fund balance, the 2.4 plus the 31 minus the Sinsbury Farms, minus the upgrades, et cetera, to go into this capital reserve fund to fund capital projects in the coming years of an emergency nature or if we decide to go with a cash to capital program and kind of keep it out of the general fund, fund balance so that when the state is looking at all of cities and towns fund balances, this money's not included in there.
So we're going to do everything but the CNR fund 18, 17, 16?
Correct. And then there's one last small transfer to general fund, sign, fund, transfer to general fund assigned fund balance for the ticket.
Ticket booth?
Yes. It's a whole $29,000.
You're not, you don't need to worry about that.
Basically, we're counting for cash. That hasn't worked out for us.
That hasn't been me. My only question is, I was sort of surprised to see that we weren't as vigorous as we might have been. And so I wondered, do you guys at the board of ed already do everything that she's now implementing? Are there things that you can, are there best practices that like, do you guys need to share ideas?
We definitely are constantly comparing notes and, you know, in some cases, we might be the guinea pig for something and other case, they might be. So P cards is something that we have looked at at the board of ed several years ago. It's something that if they find it to be really helpful. It's something that if they find it to be really helpful, we might say, yes, it is worth doing. We have used purchase orders to a much larger degree as a, as a, as a practice. I think that has been why it hasn't been as big an issue for us.
Sounds like the purchasing cards are a little less labor-intensive for the end users, right?
That alone will drive people to do it. You don't need a purchase order, right? That's the paperwork for a purchase order, two signatures versus a figure.
Exactly.
How much, how much business are we doing through Amazon?
Well, right now, not much. I think our credit line is like seventy-five hundred, but that only came out literally like two months ago and we're still piloting it with a handful of departments, maybe like five departments have access to it right now until they get into the swing of using a purchase order and then making the purchase. Because the one issue, not issue, but the one thing that we have with Amazon is if you don't use a purchase order, all of the invoices come to finance and we would have no idea who purchased it. So we're just rolling it out one at a time. But the reception of the Amazon account has been overwhelmingly supportive, yes.
We do a lot of Amazon purchasing and our accounts payable person spends a great deal of time trying to reconcile those, all those purchase orders, all those package slips. And now with the introduction of a lot of these, the related sites that you can buy through Amazon, but it's like, I forget the terminology now, it's like a partner, but they're not directly from Amazon. So that has added to the complexity of it. It's a big, it's a big part of supply purchasing. As of now, it's all, it's basically all been done with purchase orders and that monthly reconciliation.
Okay. Questions on those topics? We'll move to Burke's School Business Manager's report.
All right, so you've got both, some of the detail on the ten-one enrollment report that was included as, as well as the overall quarterly summary. Typically start with the revenue side of things, not a lot of information, some positive in that we have a couple more tuition-paying students from other, from other towns, so that's revenue that goes into the town general fund. We still have not heard on most of the statewide grants and also excess cost levels. The Choice Attendance Grant, this is the second year where we've been at that four percent enrollment target level, so that was an important part of our budget planning and we shifted some of our equipment spending to that, to that grant. And we did get some definitive news on the IDEAA federal grant, so that's our largest special ed grant and that has increased slightly, up a little over one million dollars. And it goes without saying that, you know, we're going to probably hear more after the election. Experience would tell us. It's awful quiet now at the state level, but I'm sure we'll be hearing more about the state budget. In terms of our tracking of spending for this quarter year over year, we're actually down to about a half a percent slower. And you see our, our major categories there with a little bit of detail on the second page about some of those variations. But starting with some of the enrollment and staffing, we were down twenty-one students we had predicted to be forty-three now, so it was, it was a little different than, than we anticipated. And unfortunately, some of those areas were concentrated in, kindergarten was, was the class that was, had the largest differential over what was predicted with thirty-one more students who enrolled. We look along with Nez达c at that kindergarten versus first grade yield each, each year, and this seems to be a little bit different than, than recent years where there was a bond. When full day kindergarten was put in place several, several years ago, it seemed like that, that became more of a flat thing and didn't bump up once, once, you know, once students got to first grade. So that was a little bit different this year. At a couple of schools, Tooton in particular had more than projected. So we ended up with three additional FTE to stay within class size guidelines.
Which, which, this is a big deal for me, you know that, but which schools have the additional? We hired three new.
The FTE, I believe, were distributed at Tooton and Central had, I believe, one more than we had anticipated section. Squadron might have been the other one. I'm sorry, I'm not absolutely certain. I know that Tooton was definitely one of them. You see the growth in that.
So these, this is not, I mean, the obvious question would be, was this apartment?
Well, the irony is Tooton is the one, the one section town. It has no impact from any of these, the new growth. And we did, Neil Sullivan, a good one-page update of where are all the building permits in town. I should, I should share that with you all. It was handed out at the meeting and I just need to get it scanned. It's something that we're sharing with our facilities, master plan and enrollment group that, that study that we're getting, getting ready to hire a firm for. So that is, that is one.
And that's good enough.
So the capital reserve fund, can we just walk through that again and how did you come up with that number?
So the capital reserve fund, I just took the two-point-four million that we were going to put into general fund, fund balance, and then I took out the Simsbury Farms' request. I took out the finance, security request. I took out the copier requests, closing out all of the prior CNR funds, and then that was just the two dollars.
You left over from the positive, you just moved it over to the, to this other fund?
Exactly.
And the purpose of that fund is to, again, just to use?
Right, so the way that they've been using it is when they're closing out the capital funds, any fund that is over budget, that money's used to close it. It can also be used for emergency purchases during the year.
So does the finance board have any say in that fund response?
No.
It says that they were capital funds.
That's, that's the one we said before, we didn't know this.
Right.
So the new one, super secret spending, we found two-eighty, we spent two-sixty, now we're putting eight-hundred in? Okay. Just trying to.
They've got it.
All right. Okay, so, yes.
Can you speak to the cash-to-capital program? Because that didn't exist and just sort of how you do that and all the processes from?
Sure. So the cash-to-capital program, I don't know if you've heard about it before, but it's something that Maria's super passionate about. And taking your cash and building up your reserves so that you're financing projects over, you're internally financing your projects and decreasing the amount of time and interest that relates to going out and issuing bonds. So for, you know, say anything under a million dollars, we can plan for in three years, say three-hundred thousand, three-hundred thousand, three-hundred thousand, and pay for that project in cash as opposed to going out to bond for full cost of that project, incurring the interest and returning the expenses.
How does that differ from what we've got with the CNR fund?
Yeah.
So that's what the CNR fund.
The CNR fund was doing it.
For different stuff.
Right. It's over a two-year period and so some, if you go to the capital project summary, you'll see that there's projects in here for, say, you know, seventy-seven thousand dollars, sixty-five thousand dollars, fifty-seven thousand dollars. So instead of going out to bond for those projects, we would already have the cash available to just pay for them in the year that they're being done.
So part of what we've done is, when we set the mill rate, we set it more than what we need and we use that excess to pay cash for capital.
Okay.
So would that then, and would then lower the mill rate that we need there, so?
No. I mean, the tax collection rate, not the rate.
Yeah. No, we set the mill rate to presume that we're going to collect less than we actually do, so there weren't dollars for cushion.
Tax collection rate.
She's saying the tax collection rate.
We set the mill rate knowing that the tax collection rate.
Right, right.
The same thing.
So we wouldn't change the mill rate, we would possibly change the tax collection rate.
Or they're kind of the same, right?
No.
No, they're not the same. The tax collection rate, we.
Oh, no, no, right, we're right, right, right. But, but you could, right, but you would assume that you're going to collect a more realistic number because you wouldn't need the cushion because you'd have the cash for capital account.
Right.
Is that what I'm hearing? That's my question.
What's our collection rate?
Ninety-eighty-five.
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 That's the assumption. We actually reflected about ninety-nine.
We changed to ninety-five like two years ago.
Right.
But part of the reason we kept it that way is so that we would have some flexibility and not have to go out to bond so that we could pay cash for capital. Every year, they vary, so we didn't want to, I think, get a specific number, right, because we knew it would vary based on what happened with the tax collection, if we need our expectations fail or exceed.
And so your question is, is then would we adjust the collection rate offset the cash?
Yeah. So do we, are we going to need that same cushion is my question, if we're not using it from the reasons we have used it in the past? It leaves to a little less certainty though, it gives you less flexibility. So I don't know the answer to that, but I'm posing it as something we should look at.
I never thought of the collection rate being more than the actual as a way that we funded cash to capital. I never thought of it that way.
Also, actual collection.
Well, that's what we've done with the excess.
That's how we fund reserves.
Yeah.
Was it?
Yeah.
It's a hundred percent. We actually decline.
Yeah, the revenue.
We only pick the collection rate at ninety-five.
And that's how we build reserves.
And then once we hit our reserve, well, that's where Barbara Pedigee came in and said, whoa, we've got too much reserves, let's not bond everything, let's use some cash for capital. And that was born about three years ago. And then it became sort of our regular, then the Board of Selectmen started recommending, which probably should go, cash to capital, and then we've got a cash to capital program.
Right, exactly. And it's like.
Evolution. So I guess I'm wondering, should, should we have a little, like, some group of us that works with Amy on both the CNR policy and?
And the cash to capital.
This, this eight-hundred thousand capital reserve fund, because they seem sort of linked to me?
Maybe.
Would you say fifty?
She said, I agree. Right, is that what she said?
Would you say it could?
Oh, isn't it interesting how you hear what you want? I thought you said I agree.
It depends on how you want to structure it. I mean, what, like, how you want to see the money go, what your concerns are, how you address them.
I'm not saying they have to be linked, but that the issues, I mean, if we're resolving one, they kind of.
It would affect the other, yes, yes.
And Linda's going to head up that subject?
No, I was thinking of Rob and Lisa.
Actually, that, I, yes, I'd be glad to do it more with Lisa because.
Because you guys know this.
Anyone else is welcome to jump in here.
I'm good.
I was here in August and I got put on the committee, whatever that was. Well, we can't find a date. But I do think that, that would be Lisa's perspective of how these things impact actually neighbors.
So you probably need a motion then for the other things.
Yes.
I move to approve general fund transfer requests for the finance, security, upgrades, capital fund, CNR.
Those trends, ironically, that's not where the growth in this particular year came from.
So I just, it, to me, it just screams, you know, thirty kids, three teachers, one teacher per ten kids. Doesn't feel quite right, you know, because each school incrementally got to the point where it was within, or just over the guideline.
Right, right. I mean, where you, where you, you can't, yeah, you can't have a kindergarten class or a first grade class of, you know, over that twenty-five if you have, if you have fifty-five kids, you know, and you can't split it up. You can't split it up different. I guess that's what I'm saying. You end up with something well over the guideline. It's really just how those enrollments shift from year to year. It's not about a one-to-one, oh, we had a net of extra kids, they don't.
No, but it's emblematic of having neighborhood schools that have only one or two classes of each grade, that this problem persists. And that we don't have any kind of floating zones or neighborhoods where we could have shifted a first-time kindergartner to a different school, any, not any of those kinds of lines, right?
I love floating zone. There have been years in the past where they've shifted.
Yeah.
We've seen that.
That's why I asked the question about the, I mean, this would be a clearer problem to try to fix if it was all coming from the apartment areas. We could expand. We could redirect some of those to a different school.
And that's, and that's definitely, you know, part of the purpose of the reconfiguration study aspect is where, where do those growth patterns tend to be and what might we need to do with the existing?
So I remain hopeful that the utilization study will look at things like if we had, in fact, one through four, one through three in three schools and use a different school instead of neighborhood schools, something like that, where you have concentration of, if you had thirty kids and the average class size that you desire is sixteen or seventeen, I'm not sure what it is. What's the range for?
Twenty to twenty-two.
For a kindergarten?
Kindergarten, I think it's eight.
Fifteen to eighteen.
Eighteen to twenty-three, I want to say. I think it's in this report, I always go back to look at it.
I don't want to spend too much time. I'm just saying that it continues to be my desire, speaking personally, that we are, the Board of Ed and its board and staff are thinking about ways that we can be more efficient with class size that, you know, that doesn't force the board of finances in, which is to say, you know, the budget says you only have to do this, so you do things you don't want to do. Want to see you guys come back to us or plan and uses the properties we have, the ideal size of schools and, you know, the use of buildings. That's, that's for me. So I just, this was a great example of what can happen when you have two kindergartens and five extra kids show up. You go, well, not good teachers.
Right. Yeah, we only had a situation at one school, but that wasn't the, that wasn't the area where the growth was.
Yeah. But again, the, the report shows that, you talked about it, the classes continue to get smaller and smaller. So as, as all of these kids move through the system, how are we going to use the plan that we have now most effectively? Because kindergarten class, even though it was thirty extra kids, is still the smallest class we've had compared to the senior class in high schools.
Well, it's, it's also notable that for the first time since two thousand, two thousand and three, that we didn't actually have a decline in the K six. K six has stabilized. It's actually come up the first time since. So it's moving its way through though to the higher levels and that's where we're going to see that.
All right. I mean, it's as simple as the numbers on the page. There's twenty-two additional new students and three new teachers that they hired. So that, if someone looks at it, they're going to say there's a disconnect there if your average class size is twenty-two. Why are you hiring three new teachers for twenty-six kids?
I mean, that was said much more elegantly and concisely than.
No, no, it was.
When I just read it.
Thank you.
All right. Griss for the griss mill. We know that this plan, this study is hopefully going to help us with that. I believe it will.
And on the health insurance side, we actually had a decrease in seven active participants and see we've had further shifting to, from the PPO HMO to the high deductible plans. And ultimately, some of that favorability is, is going to be helpful because we've had a couple of additional FTE for para-professional support for special ed students. So that's kind of our overall here. Our FTE is just slightly, slightly down. And we had hoped that it would be down. We had hoped that it would be down.
So how is it that, that the last sentence of your insurance and pension where it says overall favorability in this category results in something not associated with the category? Unless it is associated with the category, in which case you can let me know, that's where it's typically fluctuation.
The issue here is that we, is that we set our budget based on a set of understandings of where we thought we'd be with the, with the total FTE. So ultimately, because of the things that happened over the summer and we had to make decisions later in the summer, we didn't see the FTE come in at that same level that we had hoped. We're saying favorability in, in insurance is an area that we know overall, we're not going to be in trouble. We're seeing that our spending is still comparable to last year. In fact, slightly, you know, slightly down.
So this is, this would be a category that you reallocated maybe?
The positive. We're just saying that because, because it's, because it's a bottom line that we have to budget to, we're saying, yes, we would expect that in our instructional category that we will probably start seeing a higher pace of spending compared with what was budgeted. But we're not concerned about that, that bottom line because we know we're more favorable in insurance. So basically, we are only one.
Nineteen? No, not now.
Yes.
Yes, okay. And the ticket booth?
At St. Mary Farms.
At St. Mary Farms, thank you.
All favorites say aye. Aye. All right. I will ask that you redo these exhibits and go with it. The sheet with what we actually did?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
And then send that to us when you can.
Yep.
Just to, just to follow up, St. Mary Farms, that's under review. Is that what you said? There's a committee that's been formed to review the.
An informal committee.
Formal committee.
Yes, it's Melissa Appleby, Maria Gabriela, myself, and Dr. Percy to review the funds and over the years.
Come up with recommendations about the result, the consistent.
I think it'd be great to have somebody from the Board of Finance on that.
I'm not a golfer.
I'm not a golfer either, but I would volunteer if Kevin goes to.
Yeah, maybe if you want me to, that's fine.
Thank you, Kevin.
If they offer you a free round of golf, you must pay because.
Yeah, a little front for your interest here.
All right. How are we doing? What's next?
Investment in U.S. government bonds and.
This was like a two-by-four to the head. I can't believe we have that much money that we don't have.
Yeah. That's our investment.
So this is, this is an issue to deal with. But that has come up over the years and I've asked before, can't we invest in something better than the point two-five percent that we're getting? And I was always told no because of state law, blah, blah, blah. We can only invest in certain limited things.
Well, that is true, right, can. It's volatile.
These, this is, these are cash equivalents, right? Full cash equivalents.
But it's going to result in better interest than what we're paying, which has been pathetic. I'm, I'm self on fire about that before we got to nowhere.
But you know, it's fair, as the rates have gone up, right? So, you know, a year and a half ago.
Thank you.
You know, point five, right? Now the ten years at, what, three percent?
Three.
All right, so we need a motion for this?
No, you just have to have consensus that you are in agreement.
We are in agreement.
We don't want more money, that'd be terrible.
That's real money, right?
It is.
It's real money.
Are we limiting it to investing in U.S. government bonds and treasuries?
Our, our investment policy, yes, we are.
Motion?
Nope.
All right, so is that, is there anything else you have to do? So the, we have, what's the contracts over fifty thousand? Thank you for that information. Anybody have questions or comments on that? And so we temporarily made the ambulance thing go away?
Well, yeah, so I do have a question, a concern about that. I mean, I'd like to know a little more about what happened there and what we're doing prospectively. I mean, they did come, they and I think members of the Board of Selectmen represented that the sky was going to fall in if we didn't give them money. And not only did the sky not fall in, but all of a sudden it's like, never mind. So I'm a little concerned, what, did they do something to put themselves in a better financial footing or are we putting the town at risk that we have an ambulance service that's on shaky financial footing, who doesn't want to ask us for money but doesn't really have enough money to provide the services people need? So I, I just, I don't want to just walk away and say, okay, well, we need just.
I can certainly ask a question.
Because they'll come back in an emergency situation and then it's going to be worse than it ever was.
I just don't know if they're required to tell us. But I'll definitely ask the question.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I still want to know what's the backup plan if, if they haven't taken the steps they need to? Should we as responsible, you know, town policymakers?
Well, we are giving them money in two thousand eighteen, nineteen, right? There was, we, we did put, did we put nothing in?
No.
We gave them fifty thousand dollars.
Seventeen, eighteen.
Yeah.
And then they came back asking for more and we said, no. And we wanted a, a plan. And all of a sudden, it's like, nah, forget it. So I, it just makes me uncomfortable that either we weren't getting an accurate picture at the beginning or we have a potential landmine hanging out there that we don't really know about now.
So Sean Ascom is the representative of the Board of Selectmen that is at the center. So can we ask Sean to give us an update on that and any communication that he's had with the, between the town and the. All right. Just a short amount of hope that we find if, if it back, they found a solution to the problem. But if they're just, they don't, I mean, we have some seriously hard questions about their operations and things.
And about alternatives. Are there alternatives to this approach? Are viable?
Appropriate questions given the support they were asking.
Okay.
Woody's report looks great. Friend who's on the Board of Finance of Portfield. He was very jealous of our report. There's a lot like that. Good, anything else? Can we do this order?
I would just make the comment that I think there are going to be a lot of great ideas for all this tax mess cash that we're sitting on. So it's really thoughtful about where it goes, I believe, and I'm not sure, but it came to mind when we were talking about the one-time transfer center, but the ISF for the quarter end.
And we've, and we've also supplied some of the utility data. We haven't gotten through the winter. We obviously have had an unusual fall weather-wise with some of the heat. And we now have some more AC within the schools. And you can see, I think, the correlation there with a little bit more power usage year over year.
Amy, you're doing your more in-depth analysis second person, I remember you said. I'd be interested in our members whether the way Bird does the accounting on the front page is more or less useful. I hope he wanted it differently.
Ask again, Lisa, so.
Just the, the way Bird lays it out, the general fund revised budget expenditures here to make percent spend. That would be helpful on the town side as well. I, I think I would, I don't know if people have additional information they would want.
For the Board of, for Amy's report?
Yes.
So if you.
It is later, yes.
Yeah, there's a version later.
That's for the close of year in June, right?
Right, but that would be the image of what I would present next time except for fiscal year nineteen information.
Good, yeah. Do we have questions about the kilowatt hours and.
TMI.
All right. Well, thank you for the detail. We appreciate it.
And I will say that we are continuing to work on energy efficiency and savings in that, in that realm. So we're hoping to bring the Board of Education and Board of Finance some ideas in that regard this late, late.
All right. So next up is the year-end close results.
So if you skip over the agenda submission form and you go to where it says Town at St. Mary General Fund Schedule of Revenue for the year end of June thirty of two thousand and eighteen. So just before we get started, this is how I plan on presenting the budget update for next, for this year nineteen update for the next board meeting. So if there's anything that you don't like about it, feel free, you won't hurt my feelings. I can make any updates that, that you feel might be better utilized. So if we go all the way down to the bottom of the page, you'll see that the budget was ninety-six million, six hundred and thirteen thousand. And then we had actual revenues of ninety-seven million, seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand. If you look one item above where it says transfer in designated fund balance, you'll see that the one point five million of this variance, I'm sorry, the one point one six five variance mainly relates to this designated fund balance that was transferred into revenue during this year. Without that transfer in from designated fund balance, we are actually short in revenue by, it was about three hundred and thirty-four thousand. So aside from the designated fund balance transfer in, if you go to the top of the tape, the page under general government, some of the main outliers due to this, the three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollar variance, you'll see for the finance department that the budget variance was eight hundred and five thousand dollars. During the fiscal year eighteen budget year, there was an OPM car tax that was budgeted for one point two million that never came to fruition. So there's the majority of that decrease. Moving down to building department, you'll see that there was an increase over budget of four hundred and thirty-two thousand and this is due to the increase in permit fees compared to the budget.
On the second page. It's still on the first, still on the first page, right?
Yeah. And then if you go to down to the assessor's office, you'll see that there is a budget variance of negative one hundred and sixty thousand. And this was due to state funds for state-owned property and elderly tax relief that did not come to fruition for fiscal year eighteen. So those are the majority of your variances making up the total revenue budget variance of the one point one million.
Can you just go back to the finance department car tax?
Yes.
So during the year ended June thirty of two thousand and eighteen, we had budgeted to receive a million five. And all we got was seven forty-one.
Yeah, so of that million five, one point two million was for the OPM car tax reimbursement because they were going to cap the mill rate on the car, they were going to cap the mill rate on what we charge for vehicles. And that never happened. Or, never happened to us.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, I can't remember.
So basically, we knew they were going to cap the car rate, right? But then they let us quote it back up, correct?
But there was a period in there where they capped it.
Right.
And wouldn't let us fully tax.
Exactly.
But they didn't make room on there under the margin.
Which was to reimburse us. Is that what happened?
Yes.
Which is why we did the.
Exactly, that whole conversation.
To deal with that craziness we knew was coming.
But the elderly state tax relief, I forgot that, so they didn't.
They didn't.
And so that, that's, so while the, the car tax is, is kind of a, that's done issue because now that's gone entirely. The elderly thing is not gone and that's going to be ongoing, right? So now we're still on, we're still giving tax breaks for seniors and will never, I mean, is the state permanently never going to reimburse us for that or?
I honestly don't know.
I can't imagine they're going to. They eliminated it, right? They're not going to restore it going forward because they don't have the money. Our obligation, I think, is through ordinance. So there's a policy issue here about.
So what do we, so what do we budget? What, it's a nineteen budget for the car?
That wasn't that much. It was like a hundred and fifty, right? That came at the very last minute.
So we reduced the amount we budgeted.
Hundred and sixty.
And actually for fiscal year eighteen, it was only seventy thousand.
Oh.
And that's.
Are we declined?
Well, we budgeted to receive two ninety-four and we only got one thirty-four. So how much are we expecting to get this year?
Yeah, where's the expenditure page? How much did we actually spend on?
Oh, on the elderly constantly? I don't know, I don't want that breakout.
Let's take a look at that next month.
Yeah, so, yeah, so we will. So you're going to give us a report in November that's through September?
Yes.
For the first quarter?
Yeah, I could do it through October.
If you have it, yeah.
Yeah.
So we don't have the eight hundred thousand dollar exposure on the car tax issue because.
There's no cap.
There's no cap and we're charging the mill rate against the cars. Till that becomes a state law tax. That was a decision. Okay. What else did you want to highlight?
Under public works, you'll see that there were sixty-seven thousand budgets for actual under landfill. There was actual sixty-seven thousand that was zero budgeted. This was due to the sale of scrap metals. And then the last highlight is under education, under public schools, the two hundred and six, two hundred and fifty-six thousand that was over budget. And this was due to an increase in the ACS compared to budget and tuition.
Do we sell that kind of scrap metal every year or is that a one-time deal?
That's a really good question. I know where it came from that it was an every year thing, so.
I'm going to ask people to bring in their.
Yeah. I mean, so the plan for next budget year is to get a dollar value on that to see if we ever get included in the budget.
All right. So do you have a general idea what the breakout is between tuition and ECS over? Just to get a sense of.
Yes. So ECS came in over budget, a hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred. And the tuition came in over twenty thousand. And then there was actually another three thousand.
And what was the insurance refunds? Because there wasn't anything budgeted. That's general government.
So the insurance refunds, whenever we make a claim against our insurance company instead of offsetting the expenditures to replace or fix whenever the issue was that we're repairing or fixing, they would just take it into revenue. So that's what those are. So flipping onto the next page, you'll have your general fund schedule of expenditures. And if you go to the very, to the next page and you look at the total of our total expenditures, you'll see that we had our budget of the ninety-six, six, one, three. And then we came in actual at ninety-three thousand, eight, nineteen. So we came into the good of two point seven million. And if you look up, the next section up is debt service. If you look one more section above that, you'll see intergovernmental and you'll see the transfer out for the contingency reserve, two point five million. And this, this was our huge savings that related to the two point seven savings under the expenditures. Right. In addition to that, there was a couple items of note regarding the building department. If you look under general government, there was, it is one, two, three lines down, we had a savings of eighty-six thousand dollars due to some position vacancies. And then if you go down to. And then if you go down to Public Safety, under the Police Department, we had another significant savings of $79,000, almost $80,000. This was due to some overtime training and less-than-anticipated holiday pay. And then the last one I wanted to draw your attention to was back under Intergovernmental, under the Employee Benefits Line. There were savings of $83,000, which related to less-than-anticipated medical costs.
Those, those lines that we went over, we didn't even.
Gave it to the lawyers.
Gave it to the lawyer. Central Administration, so that's Deepwater Wind. Central Administration also Deepwater?
Actually, the Deepwater Wind, that'd be under the Legal Services, $74,000. And then if you go on to the next page, if there's some questions on those, you'll see a breakdown of your beginning fund balance and your ending fund balance. So as you can see, we started the year with beginning fund balance of $13,344. And then if you go to your preliminary actual column, we had total revenues and transfers in of the $97 million. And then we're going to subtract out the $1.5 million, since it's already included as part of that $13 million, to get your total revenues less appropriation of fund balance of $96,279. You take out your $93,819 in your total expenditures and transfers out, and then this gives you a net increase to fund balance of your $2.4 million, increasing the fund balance to $15,805. And then down below, I just gave a little summary of what's included in non-spendable, assigned, unassigned, and then your total fund balance, which is at about 17% almost.
And so I just want to point out that this is way above our own policy guidance for where we should be. We have too much money in our pockets and not enough in the taxpayer's pockets.
Stay tuned.
It's not above what Riddick's recommends.
I don't care what they recommend. They just gave us a.
Hey, we're about to borrow $200,000 from someone.
You want to use some of this, it's fine. I just don't like it all sitting in some fund of maybe a quarter of a percent.
What is Riddick's recommending right now? I'm sorry, what is Riddick's recommending for the balance right now?
They want 40% of it, so ridiculous. But that's one factor. We've had way below their recommendation all along, always been a triple A.
But times have changed also with the state. I thought that their increase, suggested increase had to do with our state governments' fiscal woes.
Yes. As that was.
As we see our aid shrinking.
Are they unstable?
I would say consistency is probably the biggest thing that they would look at here over here. We're not seeing major vacillations in our.
When you, yeah, when you see their report and you listen to the things they talk about, it's the ability of our tax base to respond in emergency, which I think is a problem for we're reaching down. And the consistency with which we do it, and the fact that we have a debt policy and that we have, that we bond appropriately with these projects, all of those things with the overall ratings.
It hasn't been until very recently that they're, they're also taking into account the state's financial situation.
Just in the last year or eight months.
Yeah, which is probably pretty smart, given what we're.
That's when they all of a sudden started announcing that increase.
Yeah.
It happened from 10 to 12.
Okay.
So then, yes. The next, you have one, two, the next three pages are capital projects. We can actually skip over those for now. Those are going to be part of our discussion as part of the capital project transfers.
Can I just ask, just for the translation question?
Absolutely.
I get lost in the, the uncommitted balance column, which is at the very end. Is this what's still residual?
That's the fund available.
So we've got projects that are ages old and still have uncommitted balances, and this is something we've been through for a few years now, and they're still lingering on here.
Yes.
And there's a whole bunch of money in all of these funds that could add to the $15 million that's in the other fund. Make it even bigger. But, I mean, really, we should be closing out projects that are eight years old and...
Yeah, so as part of the transition, starting probably the end of December, beginning of January, I'll be meeting with everybody that's in charge of all of these projects to get a status update, find out when they expect it to be completed. That way we have more, you know, we have better, better information to go back to them with our expectations.
We put into some policy, and I forget which one it was, a few years ago, that you get bonding money. You have to like finish your project within two years, and if you haven't done it, you either lose the money or have a bad condition, you shouldn't keep it. I forget. Does anyone else remember that?
They, yes.
Because this lingering of holding money in the loose bowl forever is just.
And the start and stop time of projects. I know we've kind of got ourselves in a little bit of a whole triangle inconsistency, but we're approving projects that don't even begin for three years. And does that make sense? Any one thing in the future, some of these you have one year, they were approved, but as you list these for us, can you just list when they were approved so we know how old the projects are in the future?
Absolutely.
Thank you. And there's a couple that we did not have enough money that we over-spent.
Right, I'll pick them up. Get to the capital project transfers. So if you would like to move on to where it says Towne and Simsbury Simsbury Farms Fund, and then fiscal year 2009 to 2018. And if you go to the last page of that, you'll see it says, all the way at the bottom, Fund Analysis Less Additional Appropriations. If you look up to the next section where you have your net income loss. And if you go all the way over to 2018, you'll see that Simsbury Farms Fund is showing a net loss this year of almost $230,000. And taking from our fund balance, this would leave us with a fund balance of $198,000. To give you more information on this fund over time, if you look at the Fund Analysis Less Additional Appropriations, so each year this fund would operate in the negative or maybe not in the same year, but in subsequent years, there was always additional appropriations from the General Fund to cover the losses in the Simsbury Farm Fund. So I took out those additional appropriations and gave you real figures as to what their actual net income loss was for each of those years. So you'll see year over year, starting with 2011, that this fund has consistently produced a loss, except for 2016.
And when these were consistently done, there were allocation of Parks and Rec overhead to this fund at different points in time. Was that consistent? Did you find out in these numbers?
Starting in 2008, I believe, the allocation.
Well, this goes on and back to nine. So we started allocating a good portion of the Parks and Rec director's salary and benefits.
Right. Took it out of the General Government.
Yeah. But I'm just asking, when you looked at this, there were, you don't know about that, or you didn't see that, doesn't scream at you, so that it's, these are consistent.
See, that one is real, I do. Where it was $90,000 every year. I don't understand that, right?
She's talking about allocating overhead expenses, like Jerry Tonner's salary. Everything was, came out of the Central Administration budget. And they're starting, I think it was around 2008. He said, no, you're going to pay for it all out of there, and of course, their revenues are not going to be able to keep up. That, and I think starting probably in 2012, maybe, that's when they started doing the $90,000. Then it was a one-time fix, right, back in 2015? That's it, last time.
And there was a committee that was formed. That, to my knowledge, because I was on it, I only remember attending one meeting.
I went to one meeting, maybe two.
And then I don't even remember who was sharing it, but like it just fizzled out, but we were supposed to look at, how do we address this problem?
Yeah, so this really, this really is a revenue problem.
It is.
And, and the years that they have big losses, they saw enough golf courses.
And this year, probably because of the rain in the summer, it looked like the revenue was down substantially this summer.
Yeah, somebody did that.
It looks like the expenditure was higher than that.
But I have a question.
$40,000.
I can't do the math in my head, but 2009, the expenses were $1.7 million. Almost 10 years later, $1.9 million. On a compounded increase, what is that? 100, 2%? It's tiny. It's not like.
Yeah, it's not that much.
It's not like the expenditures are out.
No, with their revenues is what they're always going short on, and there's always been a debate about how much to increase the fees in order to save. My impression always was that we were short on the revenue side, we could have done more.
Well, yeah, the revenue clearly hasn't gone up as much, but for me at least, there's also just a philosophical debate that we had here that I don't know why this is the one department in the entire town that is expected to somehow live or die by its own revenue. The police department collects money from tickets. We don't expect the police department to break even. The library collects money from late fees. We don't expect them to break even. The parks department takes care of other parks. They don't collect money at all. Why should Simsbury Farms be held to this standard that somehow they're supposed to not expect any money? This is a town service. It's, it's a wonderful thing for this town that makes us unique compared to our competitor towns. And we sort of root them quite frankly all the time about, well, you're not making enough money to support yourself. Nobody else is expected to support themselves in this town budget, so I.
Yeah, so I, I think, I think we've had this discussion before and we'll have it again. I think, I'm with you on that. The fund, the subcommittee or whatever it was, it was formed to try to solve this problem. It's at least two or three years ago, we had our last meeting, two years ago. And there was no conclusions, there was a lot of discussion. If you looked at the Simsbury Farms, this, this fund, Simsbury Farms Fund, plus the Parks and Rec budget total, we would, and, and in the years when the golf courses made money, we would have a budget variance favorable for that expenditure. And the years when they don't, we'd have a budget variance that's negative. And we use that trend to budget how much we want for that going forward. I think the issue really is that the farms, the golf courses in particular, wants some autonomy in setting fees to, I think this really started because the farms wanted, they wanted to be able to take their profits and put it back in the golf courses to make it a better golf course. If you asked Jerry Wettgen and somebody, that was the original idea was, before when it was part of the Parks and Rec, if they made money, then that would go into the General Fund. They'd have to go have a special capital project to put a new irrigation system, greens or, and that's, you know, that's hard to always have to go back and ask because that, on a list of things the town needs, a new green, new number three green, $35,000, doesn't seem like something. So that's, I think that's the history of it, but I think.
Except that the golf course is expected to carry the weight of the entire Simsbury Farms.
Agreed.
And I'm not even a golfer, so this is not my own self-interest here, but the golf course does need money, it's the rest of the Simsbury Farms, it does need money.
Some of this, though, was a budget balancing thing, too.
Yeah, absolutely.
As you remember, 2008, the bottom copped out, we all said, has to be pulled, and so they took out as much as they could.
Yeah.
To not have a tax increase. So, as always. Pay now or pay later.
So, so this is something that, this is, you know, this goes in the category of an unsolved problem that needs further discussion, but for the topic tonight, we need to give them a dollar's positive fund balance because they're tall, so.
So I would say, people always ask, why did we approve this at budget time? And we, it took years of digging as to why, but this is exactly why. Even though it's supposed to be self-sustaining, the citizens of Simsbury are responsible to this budget if they don't meet their orders. So that's why they put it out there, even though it's supposed to be paid for by fees. This is precisely why we have the residents vote on it. So we do have an obligation to fill it, legal obligation.
I agree. In terms of how we address the problem or come up with a solution, we have professional town management now.
We are currently working on it. Myself, Melissa, Tom Terzinski, and Maria are all getting together, too.
So there were other towns with similar issues, and they've solved this problem. It won't, it won't smooth the curve, won't make the problem go away, it'll just put it back in where it belongs. Or not, the geography of this.
I was just, I'm talking with, I can't remember if it was Peter or Paul, but one of them said to me, you know, by the nature of the farms, they're, $40,000 is not that big a number in the whole $95 million, and the reason why you live with that is because of the rain. Some days, some years are going to be here, some years are going to be there. Question is, what level of comfort are we with the variance? Yeah. Given that it's an unpredictable revenue source there. So that's, it's always a policy decision for us, what level of variance will be coming through. There's got to be a tomorrow's point.
All right. What's next?
Let's see. So. I believe that was the year-end close, and then we would be on to the next agenda item. Yes. So for the capital transfers, if you want to go to the second page after the Agenda Submission. Actually. Towne and Simsbury Capital Projects Capital Closeout Transfer Request. So starting from the top, we have the recommended transfers to the Sewer Use Fund. And you'll see that there was five projects there that have been completed that all came from the sewer, they were funded via the Sewer Use Fund, so those projects are being closed out and recommended that that $192,800 go back into the Sewer Use Fund where the fund came out.
So that's money from the Sewer Use Fund into the General Fund? Or from the project, specific project funds into the Sewer Use Fund?
Correct. Second one. And then moving on to the transfers to the General Fund. So these were four projects that are being closed out at the end of this fiscal year that were funded via, via bond funds. In talking with bond counsel, we have the option of either re-appropriating these monies to other projects of similar use, or we can use it to offset the debt interest. So I took the approach to offset the debt interest. The accounting is clean, everything goes back to where it came from, and that makes up your $31,769.
Good.
Moving down to transfers to the Capital Reserve Fund. These are all of, one, two, three, six projects that were being closed out that we, that were paid for via General Fund money. They total $80,389, and we're recommending that those go back into the Capital Reserve Fund to offset future losses in other capital projects and start building that Capital Reserve Fund for emergency purchases.
We had a Capital Reserve Fund.
I keep hearing that.
I had no idea.
So did we, did we ever have one before? And how much is in it?
There was $280,000 in it as of 7/11/17, so we've had it for at least a year.
Where, where is that like caper?
Where, where is that in the caper? Is it in the caper?
Um, I don't know, it should, yeah, it has to be. It's probably just included with the capital.
In the capital as opposed to a special revenue fund?
Right. And then the last three projects that are noted there were all projects that were underfunded, that actually need money from the capital reserve fund to cover the losses in these funds. So the funds were, had appropriations, they were spent according to those appropriations, but in fiscal year 14, for two of them, I know there were appropriations made from the general fund into the capital projects funds, but the transfers were not actually made. So the money stayed in the general fund and probably rolled into fund balance, so the projects were never funded. They were approved for funding, but never funded.
So they were in your $280,000.
Yep. Okay, so we're back to 15,000.
So we're down to $15,000 in the capital reserve fund.
So Amy, this is, I'm very impressed with the amount of cleaning up.
We are cleaning up.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm very impressed with the amount of cleaning up we're doing. And if you, if we had 100 things to clean up, how many, are we, have we done 10 of them, or have we done 40, or?
Let's count the finance initiatives plus the capital projects.
So we're making progress.
We are, we are making really steady progress. We really are, but there's more to do.
And Barry, can you speak to the district network infrastructure that was over?
Yep. Just get my-
But it's really the same part of that same situation.
So this, yes, it's the same relative situation. There is a difference in accounting treatment for this year for the district network infrastructure. So the way that they were taking the bond proceeds, they were taking the bond proceeds plus the premiums and allocating it to the capital project. And then somehow there was a change in practice, and the premiums were transferred to the general fund. So now the project was shorted by the amount of the premium. So it received the bond proceeds, but it didn't receive the bond premiums.
So again, we stay within our expenditures of what was appropriated.
And it just got put in the general fund, so we need to move it back to the track.
Correct.
Okay. And Amy, you're putting steps in place so that this doesn't happen again. You want to talk to that? I know you gave me a great explanation, I think it's worth saying publicly. Quarterly meetings and-
Yes, so we'll be setting up quarterly meetings with staff to make sure that they are, the project, I actually created this spreadsheet, which I showed Lisa, I'm very proud of it. I'm such a geek, but I really am, and it has every single project, it has the year it was approved, it has the appropriation, it has whether it was supposed to be funded via bond proceeds or general fund, it has all of the money that's gone into the fund thus far, all the money that's been spent out, the amount of cash that were floating, it's, it has everything you want to know about any single capital project. So that's going to be utilized going forward on a quarterly basis, to meet with the department heads, look at quarterly reviews so far, it probably won't be at the November meeting because there's just too much time constraints. But, you know, starting with the December 31 financial review, you guys can have an update on capital as well. So things along those lines we're going to implement, so make sure we don't get off the track again.
All right. General fund transfers.
Those, if you're all in agreement, we have a motion for those, to approve those, the capital projects transfers.
Well, is this where we talk about the CNR?
No. That's next.
So we're still on the-
Capital.
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry.
So we have a motion, or do we not?
Yeah.
Someone needs to publicly state it.
Whereas the motion is on the, isn't it?
Number four?
We'll see, and ours is on here, right?
Yes, go ahead, Derek.
Well, that's the next one. We're still on the capital.
I'm moved to approve the capital projects transfer request as presented.
Second.
There you go. So moved by Linda, seconded by Moron, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now we move on to the general fund transfers. All right.
Okay.
Any questions? I need a motion, no.
That would be nice.
It'd be good if you could run through the CNR thing, because I got a little lost in that one.
Yes, absolutely, I was gonna, do we want to just start with that one, or do we want to go forward?
Yeah, I think that's the need.
Okay, all right, so let's start with that one. So the CNR fund, we currently fund over five years. So if you look at fiscal year 19, for example, and the town's contribution, we are contributing $400,000 to the CNR fund for fiscal year 15, fiscal year 16, fiscal year 17, and fiscal year 18. That totals about $400,000. In fiscal year 19, we asked for $416,000 in CNR projects. So what I would like to do, since we have such a large increase to fund balance to general fund, and we don't necessarily need it for the, for, to increase fund balance in the general fund, we have a very rare opportunity where we can pay off all of our debt to ourselves and start clean going forward. So everything, each fund from fiscal year 15 to fiscal year 18 would be paid off in full, so we wouldn't be floating that cash anymore. And then in fiscal year, well, fiscal year 20, in this, in this case, instead of using that $400,000 to go back five years, we're just gonna fund it for CNR for fiscal year 20 and clean it up.
So-
So we still have a CNR fund?
Yes. Nothing else changes, it's just the money's not being applied to five funds.
We're not gonna do the five years going forward, right?
That's up for discussion during budget.
So there are two parts to this. One is, Amy and I had a nice discussion about this this afternoon. This is an opportunity to look at the idea of, instead of, what we've been doing is buying $400,000 worth of stuff every year, and then paying for it for five years.
A bus.
Huh?
A bus, for example.
What's that?
A bus, a-
A bus, yeah.
Plow.
Bus, a plow, whatever it was that goes into that. To the point where we're paying $400,000, we could just be buying the bus.
Okay.
Yeah. And when I had this discussion with Sean, it was always, he agreed that this didn't make that much sense, except that it would screw us all up to stop it, because you have this unexpensed portion of the last four years that you would have to deal with, it would make that one year. But so what Amy's recommending, there are two parts to this. The first part is, let's take off the part that hasn't been expensed by transferring it from the surplus or the general fund. So we, there's nothing left to amortize. If we make this transfer, how am I doing?
Yes.
If we make this transfer, there'll be nothing left to amortize going forward. The second part of this is, how are we going to budget and pay for capital items that were in this category going forward?
Right.
And there are two options, that way I see it. One is, whatever we buy, we buy, whatever we need in a year, we buy it and we expense it, full stop. That will create an up and down. However, it wouldn't have over the last five years, because we've spent about $400,000 of new equipment every year. But that would, the potential is, in some year, if we had some large expenditure for these kind of items, could be 400, 400, 800, 400, you know, 200. There's another way we could do this, which would be to have a CNR, you know, capital reserve fund, where we fund, on an average, $500,000 a year. And if we only spent $400,000, that would increase the fund balance. So instead of dragging the old purchases along with us, we could be building up money to be sure we always had enough to buy for that unusual year. So it's going, it's really, it's the mirror image of what we've been doing. To me, if we are, you know, we have a long history now, the items that go into this, and so we should be comfortable with either one of those two scenarios, saying that we could just, let's buy what we buy when we buy it.
Are you saying buy what we buy and pay for it, but also build up a reserve?
Well, we've always paid, we've always paid for it. It's when, it's when the actual accounting expense gets recognized against the budget. So, you know, I mean, we paid for the cat, the truck, I mean, we bought the truck.
Right.
But the impact on our budget for that truck affects this budget here, next budget here. So, so we pushed it, we paid it forward.
Are you saying buy the truck this year, but also build up a reserve?
I think that's, that's one of two options. Basically, just bring forward all that expense that we haven't broken down yet. And then going forward, we will have, as part of the 19 and 20 budget, either we'll go, we'll stop depreciating, or, you know, spend or spread them out over five years.
And money to, how much internal debt is there for this? Where's the money come from? Because that comes, because we didn't end up spending the $2.5 million contingency costs.
Right, so that's why this is a good opportunity, as you can look at this, because rarely will that happen again.
To your point earlier about it basically uses undesigned, it's unbalanced, to clean up the bridge.
Right. So, sort of the rationale behind the old CNR, this is why I really explained it to you once in class, you should do it again, just as it comes and does with my understanding of it. The theory behind it is we wanted the departments to own some of it. So if we asked a department to buy a plow truck every year, for instance, that was the $300,000, or whatever it was, it's, they would then be charged for a fifth of it for five years, so that they're always paying a fifth of the plow truck, right? So does this, and then it was assigned back to them. So the CNR transfers, the old policy recommendation was that it be attributed to each department, so the departments would own their part of the capital. How does that change under your proposals, or does it?
It doesn't change, there's no, there wouldn't be any change to that, but I guess I'm just not clear on how they were paying for the one fifth, and it was just coming from the transfer.
So I think that what happened is, and Maureen, you can help me with that, is I think that perhaps over time, the board's alignment didn't ascribe it to the different departments, they just did one CNR transfer. So it wasn't, it was just through one separate line item, which we see separate tab in the budget books. So what we're doing now, like when, when they purchase a truck, right, we only ascribe for the current year, the CNR transfer only a fifth of it, because it's paid over five years.
Right.
So how, will that change what the budget book looks like, that sheet on CNR? Does it change at all? No, because it's just-
No, so in this case, like Rob said, we've been spending $400,000 year over year over year. So literally, instead of transferring the money from one, two, three, four, five funds, you're just transferring it to one fund, and you have all of your funding through the CNR fund at the beginning of the year.
So the approval process for capital items that would fall into this category, it would be the same as it is today.
Correct.
But it'll get bought and paid for and only impact the budget. And on a department management issue, I take that, I hadn't really thought of it from that perspective. You have a unique perspective. Managed the people, so I get that. On the other hand, maybe we bought some stuff we didn't need, because I, you know, the $500,000, the $100,000, whatever, you know, pickup truck only cost us $20,000 a year.
I don't think that we bought stuff that we didn't need. I think it helped to have years and years of zero percentage increases, so we were able to move that money off fine.
Well, it only, it only gives you four, five, five years of great business.
Right.
Once you've caught up, and then you're back.
Exactly. And now we're on the treadmill.
But it's only a fraction of the $400,000.
Yeah, exactly.
So it stretches it out for a short period.
Two or three, two or three years.
Right.
When we stop.
But I thought there was another issue, and, and that was, and maybe this is what you were gonna say, I thought there was a sort of psychological thing about that department head who needs, you know, only once every 10 years, some big thing, a new gen, whatever, that for whatever reason isn't going into the regular capital budget, that it was a way to make sure they weren't deferring maintenance in the lean years.
Exactly, we all know that. Yeah, we're not gonna buy the last note.
Money all at once.
All of a sudden, we need five buses.
Right. So, I mean, if we go this route, then what are we gonna do to protect against that potentiality?
So that's back to the creative reserve, but it's the same kind of gimmick, it's not the right word, but it's the same kind of, you're looking forward instead of backwards.
Right. But I think it'd also be helpful to have policy that very clearly circumscribes what goes into this fund, which things can, and just have-
There's a definition.
We have years of experience knowing what kinds of things were in there, but also policy that very clearly prevents somehow budget efforts to delay maintenance and, because-
We don't want to do that.
I mean, we've seen that sort of sleight of hand before, and it's, we don't like it.
So that will be included in the CNR annual policy that we are currently revising, we should hopefully have drafted here.
So Amy, does that mean that, tell me, this last CNR, I can't remember what was purchased, but it was a number of trucks and cars and equipment, and they were, but they only paid a fifth of it-
Right.
-in their budget. So this coming year, there'll be $400,000, if they buy one car and one truck, that's $400,000. Is it still the pay it forward? Is it still like a loading yourself money, or is this-
What's the messaging to the boards? How much do they have?
Right. So how would it look different this year?
They have the same $400,000 that we've had for-
But they didn't always have $400,000 every year.
Well, they have to justify the, the purchase, just like they always do.
So it would be the full purchase or a fifth of the purchase?
Right.
That's my question. So they're buying less stuff under your proposals? Is that my question for here?
No.
No? Okay.
Be the same.
And I think we need to be clear that we're not gonna allow, if we're gonna do going forward, we're not gonna have, you know, people buying buses, which you amortize over three years, isn't it? In this five-year fund. I mean, you buy a bus every single year.
It's a great point.
Why, I mean, the title of the fund, or a police car, they buy every single year. That should never have been in these funds. I mean, that should be, you know, just a standard thing that you buy every year.
There are three words.
The words capital and non-recurring. The non-recurring, it's like, happens every year, that sounds kind of like it's recurring to me.
And capital, basically, capital.
As opposed to studies.
Yes.
So our policy didn't say capital and non-recurring, I mean, or, so we read it as it could be either one. So the, but the question is, so buy full trucks, so they can still buy five trucks and only pay a fifth of it, and they'll pay it back to town every, for five years, or no?
No, you're paying for it.
Right.
They purchase it.
So that means they'll be buying quite a bit less stuff.
He shouldn't, he shouldn't.
Okay.
So it's that mentality that we're trying to change, how that would affect his budget?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It would be different, because, because, you know, each, the town and the board just use rough numbers, have had about $500,000 per, per year. And since I've been here about 11 budgets roughly, it was Peter Askam who really was kind of pushing for this, well, let's just keep it the same level. So you had, I think, a little bit of that informal policy that stabilized the amount of the ask, but also, my understanding, that I think I shared the last time we talked about these policies, which was probably a year or two back, was that I believe it was created in part to protect us from ourselves, so to speak, right? So that, just speaking of the order of that process, we have one large number in that, in that operating budget. So if you were tempted to try to meet a, an operating budget percentage and cut your CNR spending, which is not just things, it's also repairs to building, maintenance, but you're only gonna get one-fifth of that value if you cut your operating budget. So it kind of keeps you from going there, and that was some of that wisdom that I understood it was well, well before I got here. And that was some of that wisdom that I understood it was well, well before I got here. So, a lot of questions come, come to mind that we have to work out with that sort of next policy update. Because we, we approved that in that third question on the ballot. It's that miscellaneous, you know, with debt, retirement, and the, and special revenue funds. One of the practical ways that we use it is that, you know, it's not a singular operating appropriation. It is a two-year lifespan, which goes back to that policy. So, we get to be planning a little bit like we do with the IDEA grants. We're kind of planning a couple of years. We, we're not just one year at a time. Sometimes we purchase a, a large number of buses, for example. We try to keep it consistent, two or three per year. So, we just have to understand how, how that might change if you, if you make some of these other changes and how, you know. I would advocate that it should not be a one-year, and then it's just basically operating, that it's still kind of got a separate, a separate fund status and...
I think it's a cool point that you made, that it actually helps. It almost forces you to buy things and not cut things. Because you're only getting one tit for the reduction, right?
But he's, he's also making the point about the impact on your choices in your operating budget. That if you think, well, I'll cut maintenance, which is an operating expense.
Right.
Then, then, but it's, it's going to not save you that much.
Say that again.
Yeah, that was a little light one off when you said that. It's just that, it's just that because our, our categories are both buying infrastructure, equipment, but also repairs to, you know, it's like replacing the flooring or the ceiling project. It's that basic maintenance that isn't just sitting in our operating budget that we're able to plan for. And so, by intent to cut that, you remove some of that temptation in trying to hit your operating target. Because you're really just sort of putting it off to the side, and you're borrowing from yourself, is the way it was always explained.
But, but what Rob's saying, what I'm hearing you say is that instead of borrowing sort of prospectively, you're, you would just be paying for it out of this reserve fund. So, it still wouldn't hit you negatively? I mean, I would think you take out of truly recurring things, the cop car that gets bought every single year. But the things like that, you're saying maybe if, if it doesn't have to hit your operating expenses and isn't charged back to you in some way, but it comes out of the CNR fund, that's pre-funded instead of post-funded?
Because I just don't think we're going to have the stability in this hypothetical fund. I mean, if it exists, but I mean, the way we're talking about changing.
Because I think what he's, what he's trying to say is, and I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, is that we come and we say you have to cut, and if there's a project, they're more likely to cut with, with the new proposal versus what they currently have. If, if we say come and cut, they try to cut, they're only going to get one-fifth of the savings now. So, it actually prevents them from doing the big...
Stability, just like stability in how much we were spending that, that, you know, prior to where the finance said, let's kind of keep it level. There's some benefits to that consistency, that that's what we spend to maintain our plates and our infrastructure. How we do it and how we fund it, is a sort of a separate conversation. But there are some important aspects there that I don't think we want to lose.
Is there a way to keep that incentive? But instead of funding it prospectively, you are funding it with annual expenses, really?
Well, you can, all right, so, you could wipe the slate clean, which is what Amy's report. And then we could...
Put enough in that fund.
We put $500,000 into the fund every year. And you had to come get those things approved, same, same approval process you have. So, the question is, how does that, those expenditures hit the expense budget? That really is the issue.
That's part of it, but we have, we have a different approval process for that in town in terms of, you know, we, we show what our categories are, and it's part of the public hearing notice, which we've all seen of the CNR spending. We're not coming, we're not coming and asking, you know, for a transfer each time. We're able to plan and say, we have this amount of money in interior improvement, exterior improvement. Those are the types of categories outside of vehicle stuff that, that we have a source of funds. And we're able to figure out where we're going to, where we're going to repair X, Y, Z.
And is there a standard? What's that? Is there a standard?
Not that I'm aware of. Everybody does it differently. Everybody funds it differently. Everybody, you know, some people use, you know, a contribution to their capital reserve only based on, you know, the general fund coming into positive. Some people fund it every year. Some people fund it as necessary. So, best practice, I can definitely research. But I know it's not done in one standard way every single place. And that's kind of the beauty of it, honestly, because we can match our needs to what we want, whatever we want it to be.
You know, if we wipe the slate clean, if we can buy a couple of extra million dollars worth of stuff this year, we'd be right back where we are.
I don't think that's the point.
Oh, it's not the...
So, one of the things that Lynda, you raised, and Kevin, you raised as well. And what we did in the last budget cycle, we had the plow truck, remember, as part of CNR. And I think the recommendation was put it in capital. We didn't want to do that. Instead, we moved it back into operating, because you do it every certain number of years, just like the police cars. Now, the reason we didn't move the police cars and the plow truck into operating is because we had a limit on how much we were going to let the boards raise their operating budgets. But if we want to make that accounting transfer and do that sort of like we do in the pension, we could get the accounting right. A lot of the, to Maureen's point, a lot of the reason why stuff ended up in CNR was because of 2008, and they were trying to get everything out of the operating budget. So, you ended up with the police cars that only have a three-year life in CNR or in other funds, as opposed to, they used to be in the operating budget, as did the plow truck. But those got moved out to try and deal with the financial crisis that occurred. So, to the, but once you do that, it's very hard to do it back in. But in terms of things that we might consider for the boards, is, if there are accounting things like that that we now feel we're in a position to correct, to not count those against their budget increase and just fix it. I mean, we are in a position where maybe we have an opportunity to fix some of the past practices that we had to do, and I think appropriately so, because the world was watching at the time those decisions were made.
And we have professional management too.
Yes.
It's really a deep liberalization of, you know, decision-making.
Yeah, that's very important. So, what's the timeline in which we have to do this? Do we need to vote on this tonight, or...
You do not. So, if you don't vote on it tonight, everything goes into general fund, fund balance, and then we can address it at budget time.
I, I, it's money enough for me that I think we should think about it. And I, maybe you and I can talk about it. Anybody's welcome to. But I don't have my head completely around all of the motivations that, that, and to your point, Bert, was very interesting. I, we, the example was always given was that they would defer buying buses until we needed so many buses that busted the, busted the budget. But the, the flip side's true too, which is that it's too easy to just kind of boss because of this $80,000, whatever bus go, I have no idea what a bus goes.
Close, it's gone up a little bit, but yeah, they were about...
I think we have to have a better handle on what the unintended consequences would be of the switch.
Yeah, exactly. So, it's not just an accounting question, it's, it's a behavior, it's a management question. It's really a management question.
And can, and can we put safeguards in place to manage the management?
We will work on that, all right?
And do we want to move stuff back into operating?
What's that?
And then do we want to move stuff back into operating then?
Well, one of the first comments I had with Amy today is I think we do need to, as part of this effort, concentrate on the things that Lynda mentioned, which are capital non-recurring, or capital and non-recurring, or capital or non-recurring. Because I think the dollar impact of those things might be as important as this transfer. Because expenses are expenses, expenses, nothing to do with cash. It has to do with accounting expense recognition, right?
All right. Do we want to address the other things that are listed?
Okay, so, if you go to just the summary page with the dollar values, the town's general fund, general fund closeout transfer request after the agenda submission. So, the first part is we told the transfers to the general fund of the $31,769. This was already discussed as part of the capital projects. This was the debt interest offset for the capital projects that we were closing out, and we were transferring the remaining funds into the general fund. So, that one's already taken care of. So, if you go down to where it says transfers from general fund, we have the Stinsbury Farms operating loss of the $230,000. And then below that, you have finance, security upgrades, capital fund. So, back in 2018, there was $150,000 appropriated for finance, security upgrades. And looking at the funding in that fund, the majority of those expenditures were not capital in nature. So, they have like threat prevention subscriptions for $300, a filtering subscription for $300, wildlife subscription for $300. All of these, there, there are a couple of capital items. But the majority are a small, either one-time, $40, $25, $115 subscriptions, where we are authorized to bond under this fund in looking at the capital budget from fiscal year 18. So, what I would like to do, since these expenditures are so small, I would like to pay for them via general fund money and then put the appropriation back to $150,000. And part of the reason for that is both the town and Board of Fed are all in agreement on going out for a new financial software. So, we would like to use these funds to propose a new financial software to do the progress assessment and the internal control audit. We need, according to the management comment in the audit last year, capital asset software, which would be so helpful. And we are also looking at some HR software that would integrate into our accounting software. So, that's where that $80,000 is coming from. And then under CNR fiscal year 19, we have two color copiers right now that are getting service calls pretty regularly. In talking with our copier vendor, they're no longer making parts for those copiers. We purchased them back in 2008, and they typically only make parts for, I believe you said, eight to nine years. So, those copiers are going to be in need of replacement. So, the quotes that we received, we're actually able to replace these copiers with actually a savings to the town in the long run, because the price per copy is decreased from five cents or .05 cents to, from 10 cents a copy. In addition to that, we have a maintenance contract that they offer for $312,000 a year that takes care of all of the maintenance on the machine, as well as the toner purchases. And the toner in and of itself is a large expense. The cartridges are usually...
I think you're good on this one.
Yeah.
Moving on.
Too much to deal.
And the CNR for fiscal year 18, 17, 16, those are the ones that are being tabled to budget season. So, those will now go into general fund, fund balance. And then the capital reserve fund, this was just the remaining net increase to fund balance, the 2.4 plus the 31 minus the Stinsbury Farms, minus the upgrades, et cetera, to go into this capital reserve fund to fund capital projects in the, in the coming years of an emergency nature, or if we decide to go with a cash to capital program and kind of keep it out of the general fund, fund balance, so that when the state is looking at all of cities and towns' fund balances, this money is not included in there.
So, so we're going to do everything but the CNR fund 18, 17, and 16?
Correct. And then there's one last small transfer to general fund assigned, fund, uh, transfer to general fund assigned to fund balance for the ticket...
Ticket booth?
Yes. It's a whole $2,900. And that's it for that.
So, the capital reserve fund, can you just walk through that again? And how did you come up with that number?
So, the capital reserve fund, I just took the 2.4 million that we were going to put into general fund, fund balance. And then I took out the Stinsbury Farms request, I took out the finance, security request, I took out the copier requests, closing out all of the prior CNR funds. And then that was just the...
Anything left over from the positive?
Exactly.
You just moved it over to the, to a separate fund?
Exactly.
And the purpose of that kind of is to, again, just to use...
Right, so, the way that they've been using it is when they're closing out the capital funds, any fund that is over budget, that money is used to close it. It can also be used for emergency purchases during the year, maybe related to...
So, does the finance board have any say over that?
It's a safe word, capital funds.
That's, that's the one we said before, we didn't know this is...
So, the new one, where we, where we're spending, we found 280, we spent 260. Now, we'll put an 800 in?
Yeah.
Okay, just trying to keep it...
You got it.
All right. Okay, so, yes?
Can you speak to the cash to capital program? Because that didn't exist. And just sort of how you do that, how the process is going on?
Sure. So, the cash to capital program, I don't know if you've heard about it before, but something that Maureen is super passionate about. And taking your cash and building up your reserves so that you're financing projects over, you're internally financing your projects and decreasing the amount of time and interest that relates to going out and issuing bonds. So, for, you know, say anything under $1 million, we can plan for in three years, say $300,000, $300,000, $300,000, and pay for that project in cash, as opposed to going out to bond for the full cost of that project, incurring the interest and the attorney's expenses.
So, how does that differ?
That's what CNR was doing.
Yeah, that's what the CNR fund was doing.
The CNR fund was doing it...
Different stuff.
Right, it's over a two-year period. And so, some, if you go to the capital project summary, you'll see that there's projects in here for, say, you know, $77,000, $65,000, $57,000. So, instead of going out to bond for those projects, we would already have the cash available to just pay for them in the year that they're being done.
So, part of what we've done is, when we set the mill rate, we set it more than what we need, and we've used that excess to pay cash for capital.
Okay.
So, would that then mean we would then lower the mill rate that we need, the excess? No, or...
No, you mean the tax collection rate?
Yeah. No, we set the mill rate to presume that we're going to collect less than we actually do. So, there was all the cushion.
Tax collection rate.
She's saying collection rate.
We set the mill rate knowing that the tax collection rate is...
Right, same thing.
So, we wouldn't change the mill rate, we would possibly change the tax collection rate.
Or they're kind of the same, right?
No.
No, they're not the same. The tax collection rate, you know, we...
Oh, no, no, right, 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 right. But, but you could, right, but you would assume that you're going to collect a more realistic number, because you wouldn't need the cushion, because you'd have the cash for capital account.
Right.
Is that what I'm hearing? That's my question.
What's our question right now?
98.5.
98.5.
That's the assumption. We actually collected about 99 something.
Two years ago.
But part of the reason we kept it that way, so that we would have some flexibility and not having to go out to bond, so that we could pay cash for capital. I think every year, we, they vary, so we didn't want to, I think, get a specific number there, because we knew it would vary based on what happened with the tax collection. Did we meet our expectations, fail, or exceed?
And so, your question is, is then do we adjust the collection rate to offset the cash?
Yeah, so, do we, are we going to need that same cushion is my question. If we're not using it for the reasons we have used it in the past. It leaves to a little less certainty though, it gives you less flexibility. So, I don't know the answer to that, but I'm posing it as something we should think about.
I, I never thought of the collection rate being more than the actual as, as the way it'd be funded, cash to capital. I never thought of it that way.
Also, actual collection rate...
Well, that's what we've done with the excess.
That's how we fund reserves.
Yeah.
Was it?
Yeah.
It's 100%.
Yeah, they'll run it in front of us.
Put the collection rate at 98.5.
That's how we build reserves.
And then once we hit our reserve level, that's where Barbara Pettigee came in and said, whoa, we've got too much reserves, let's not bond everything, let's use some cash for capital. And that was born about three years ago. And then it became sort of a regular, then the board of selectmen started recommending, which kind of should go, cash to capital, and now we've got to cash to capital.
Right, exactly. They're just like, evolution, nothing...
So I guess I'm wondering, should we have a little, like, subgroup of us that works with Amy on both the CNR policy and this 800,000 Capital Reserve Fund because they seem sort of linked to me?
Would you say could be?
She said I agree.
She said it could be.
Isn't it interesting how you hear it, I thought you said I agree.
It depends on how you want to structure it. I mean, but like, how you want to see the money go, what your concerns are, how you address that.
I'm not saying they have to be linked, but that the issues, I mean, if we're resolving one, they kind of...
It would affect the other, yes.
Linda's going to head up that subject.
No, I was thinking of Rob and Lisa quite frankly.
Actually, that, I, yes, I'd be glad to do it for them, because...
Because you guys know this stuff.
Anyone else is welcome to jump in here.
I'm good.
I was here in August and I got put on the board of that committee when it was. Well, we can't find the date. But I do think that that would be Lisa's perspective of how these things impact actual behaviors are very invaluable.
So you probably need a motion then for the other things.
Yes.
I move to approve General Fund transfer requests for the Finance, Security, Upgrades Capital Fund, the CNR Fund 19?
No.
No? Not that one?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay. And the ticket booth?
And Simsbury Farms.
And Simsbury Farms, thank you.
All say or say aye? Aye. I will ask that you redo these exhibits and go with it, the sheet with what we actually did.
Yes.
Okay?
Okay.
And then send that to us when you can.
Yep.
Just to follow up, the Simsbury Farms, that's under review, just that, what you said, there's a committee that's been formed to review the...
An informal committee.
Informal committee.
Yes, it's, well, it's Applebee's, I'm really, myself, and Tom Trump speaking to review the fund and over the years.
Couple of recommendations about a way to resolve the inconsistency. I think it'd be great to have somebody from the Board of Finance on that informal committee. I'm not a golfer.
Perfect.
I'm not a golfer either, but I could volunteer if Kevin doesn't want to.
Yeah, if you want me to, that's fine.
Thank you, Kevin.
Since I live on Simsbury Farms. They offer you a free round of golf, you must pay because we're under revenue. All right, how we doing? What's next?
Investment in U.S. government bonds and...
This was like a two-by-four to the head. I can't believe we have that much money that we don't have.
Yeah. That's why I'm investing.
This is an issue that has come up over the years and I've asked before, can't we invest in something better than the 0.25% that we're getting? And I was always told, no, because of state law, blah, 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 we can only invest in certain limited deals.
These are cash equivalents, right?
Right.
Full cash equivalents.
But it's going to result in better interest than what we've been paying, which has been pathetic and I've lit myself on fire about that before and gotten nowhere except...
But even on par, some of the rates have gone up, right? So, you know, a year and a half ago, it was, you know, 0.5, right? Now the 10-year's at, what, 3% or something like that?
That explains it.
All right, so we need a motion for this?
No, you just have to have consensus that you are in agreement with the...
We are in agreement.
We don't want more money, that'd be terrible.
That's real money, right?
It is.
It is real money.
Are we limiting it to investing in U.S. government bonds and treasury?
For our investment policy, yes we are.
Motion?
Nope.
All right, so is there anything else we have to do? So we have, what's the contracts over 50,000? Thank you for that information. Anybody have any questions or comments? And so we temporarily made the ambulance thing go away?
Well, yeah, so I do have personally a concern about that. I mean, I'd like to know a little more about what happened there and what we're doing prospectively. I mean, they did come, they and I think members of the Board of Selectmen represented that the sky was going to fall in if we didn't give them money. And not only did the sky not fall in, but all of a sudden it's like, never mind. So I'm a little concerned. Well, did they do something to put themselves in a better financial footing or are we putting the town at risk that we have an ambulance service that's on shaky financial footing who doesn't want to ask us for money but doesn't really have enough money to provide the services people need? So I just, I don't want to just walk away and say, okay, well, we need just...
I can certainly ask the question.
Because they'll come back in an emergency situation and then it's going to be worse than it ever was.
I just don't know if they're required to tell us. But I'll definitely ask the question.
Yeah, and I mean, I still want to know, what's the backup plan? If they haven't taken the steps they need to, should we as responsible, you know, town policymakers be having a backup plan?
We are giving them money in 2018, 19, right? There was, we did put, did we put nothing in?
No.
We gave them $15,000.
Yeah, and then they came back asking for more and we said no. And we wanted a plan and all of a sudden it's like, nah, forget it. So I, it just makes me uncomfortable that either we weren't getting an accurate picture at the beginning or we have a potential landmine hanging out there that we don't really know about now.
So Sean Askew is the representative from the Board of Selectmen that was the front center. So can we ask Sean to give us an update on that and any communication that he's had with the, between the town and them? And just to show them all would be fine if that, in fact, they found a solution to the problem. But if they're just, they don't, we asked some seriously hard questions about their operations and things, but appropriate...
And about alternatives. Are there alternatives to this approach or viable?
Appropriate questions, give them the support they were asking.
Okay.
Fair enough. Woody's report looks great. A friend who's on the Board of Finance of Brookfield, he was very jealous of our... Theirs is not like that. Good, anything else we do with the order?
I would just make the comment that I think there are going to be a lot of great ideas for all this excess cash that we're sitting on. So it's really be thoughtful about where it goes. I believe, and I'm not sure, but it came to mind when we were talking about the one-time transfer center, but the ISF for the fund that we were going to fund, I believe, a million dollars?
The help?
Yeah, the help.
The internal service help.
Yeah, thank you. Is that, would that be this, would that be under this year as well? I mean, there's another million dollars that we have on the table that we'll be talking about, so it's going to go...
We did that though, we transferred that. It wasn't ready.
That's not an every year.
It was...
That was to give...
That was that we got to the final budget number, the town and the board.
Yeah. We boosted the fund so that it acted more as a cushion like a fund should, right? And allowed the rates...
So that was for this?
That's for the fiscal year we're in.
Yeah, right.
But I think you make a fair point that we need to be careful about not feeling like, yeah, we got loads of money in that, with the extra two, two and a half million because it's not like the state budget this coming year is going to be in great shape.
There's a reason why we did it.
So that contingency may be something we just want to roll over till next year.
We took part of that into consideration when we set the mil rate for this year also. And that was all part of the discussion, but no, we lowered the mil rate. Part of it was revouched, part of it was that we didn't need the two and a half that we decided. But that's a good segue to the November meeting is to seriously consider the guidance that we want to bring to the tri board meeting in early December. And so to the extent that, you know, this was very helpful tonight to have an update on this year's budget and expenses and from Burke's perspective, the issues around the budget. But we do need to have considerations of super price index, grant list, anticipated grant list growth would be very helpful for the November meeting. And I don't know whether that comes from the assessor's office, but we've had guidance from the older development office and the assessor's office. So that we can think about, you know, and similarly from the town and the Board of Ed, sort of where the contracts are. I think that information before, you know, sort of the, that's where you guys usually start, which is less is baked in, part of the circle path to spend it. But similarly, you know, we'll, I think the dialogue, we like the dialogue at the tri board meeting to be about not just dollars and cents, but about working together to get to the goal of an efficient school system, an efficient town. I think clearly seeing the benefits of Maria and Amy, the management of the processes and things and that's not to throw anybody under the bus who we won last year. But the kind of detailed agenda, preparation items and things, this is all good and detailed reports, because we do appreciate that. So let's come with our thoughtful, to the extent that we can get any information about, you know, those CPI, the expenditures and the grand list in advance of the meeting so that we can digest them to talk about.
If anyone has other things they can send to us.
All right, great. I did not beat Linda's 625, the chairman. I'll make the motion to the chairman.
Second?
Oh, they were saying, good meeting.
Funding for Simsbury Community Television is provided in part by contributions from viewers like you. Thank you.